It is fine, we can call the regular board meeting together for September the 12th. If you would all please join me in pledging the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Full call, please.
Mr. Engel?
Present.
Mrs. Gillis is absent tonight. Dr. Messer?
Present.
Mrs. Wachols?
Present.
Mr. Zappa?
Here. We entertain a motion on item four to adopt the agenda as presented, including any amendment. Your motion, and a second, is there comments or discussion? Hearing or seeing none, things call a roll.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Mrs. Wachols? Dr. Messer, I mean, Mr. Engel?
Aye. Item five is hearing of the public. We have a couple people that signed up to speak to us this evening. Mr. Wagner? You can state your name and address, please.
My name is Scott Wagner. I live at 708403 Drive North Lorraine, Ohio, which is a Lorraine mailing address, but Amherstville School District. I have three or four questions that I'd like to pose to the board tonight. And at the conclusion of this, I'm not going to go into deep detail because I think it's probably more appropriate than I request a private meeting with the superintendent of the schools and the board as well, if that's possible. My questions tonight are: who hires the athletic director? Who hires the head football coach? Is the coach, the football coach, head football coach on a contract? Or is he on a year-to-year? Because I've heard a couple of different things. To whom are these personnel accounting? And lastly, is this board aware of the things that are going on within our football organization right now? Outside of a losing record, our football program is in very bad shape from a personnel standpoint. That's an opinion on my part. And the rest of my remarks, I'd like to reserve for our private meeting, if that's possible.
That's fine. We will not answer any questions tonight in regards to that.
That's fine.
Okay, because you are going to request to have a meeting. Then that meeting will be with the superintendent. And then he will bring those concerns to us because I think we may be aware of some of those concerns already. But once you've met with him, we will have that conversation. And then if we see the need necessary, we will be glad to meet with you as well.
Okay, that's fair.
Is that there?
Yes.
All right. Then that's all I have for tonight.
Okay.
Mrs.?
Mrs. Yes.
Mrs., you don't wish to speak, even though you're on the paper?
Well, we decided, once we sat down and we were reading three things, that we felt that, because we have things to share that we were asked to share by other parents that wanted to be anonymous, that we felt it would be better to do a private meeting. So, my name is Sally Wagner. And my address is 708403 Drive North.
And I would just say that if you're representing a group of people, we will eventually ask for the names of that group of people. So they won't be, you know, anonymous things come to us all the time. We can't take action unless we know exactly where some of that information is coming from. So you just may want to have that discussion with the anonymous people as well. Or invite them to meet with the superintendent also.
I will, as long as it's a private meeting, maybe if we can have a private meeting, concern is concerns for their athletes, and what kind of repercussions would happen?
It'll be a private meeting, one-on-one with the superintendent.
Okay, so a group can come and meet with you?
Sure.
That would be wonderful.
I think that would probably be the best, when everything is here all at one time, instead of...
Absolutely. And we have been trying to get everybody to come together, but it was expressed that they were concerned about...
They were saying they were concerned about what would happen if they spoke out or whatever. I understand. Okay, so, meet with Mr. Mulnar?
Absolutely.
May we call your office for an appointment, or will you contact us?
Well, I'll talk to you maybe after the meeting if you stay. If not, we can, you can call my office, we can set something up.
You mean, we would talk to you privately, or schedule, talk to you, schedule?
I'd be free to talk with you, just a schedule.
Okay, that's what I wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Girl.
Thank you. Okay, no one else has signed up to address the boards? Anyone else need to address this here? Seeing no one volunteering to address us, we will move on to item six, which would be the trellis report.
Board, I do not have a presentation or an actual report for you this evening. As you know, from my email, August financials are not yet complete. I did want to speak to you, though, about a change in meetings, or in addition to meetings. Mr. Mulnar and I spoke to Mr. Engel about this last week during the agenda review. And I am requesting a September 26th, 26th special meeting, primarily for permanent appropriations, which must be adopted by the end of September. And then whatever else is necessary, et cetera. And then, to cancel the Monday, November 7th meeting, it's too early in the month for the prior months financials to be complete. And then create a special meeting on November 28th in place of the November 7th meeting. And that would be any regular board business for the month of November, as well as the five-year forecast. And then, for you all to keep in mind that when the board and admin attend the House School Boards Association Capitol Conference in November, there's a special meeting on that Sunday. It's been like that, what, the last 10 years or so? I think the entire time that Mr. Sayers was the superintendent. And that is, it coincides again with OSBA Capitol Conference. And the board and senior admin team were to discuss bold strategic planning. That's typically the only agenda with no action to be taken in November. So I just...
Can it tell in Columbus?
Yes, it's held in Columbus. We don't have to decide this evening, but that is my intent, to have a first and special meeting on September 26th.
Okay, so let's just take, let's just make that happen, okay? So September the 26th, at 5:30 p.m.?
That is up to the board.
With the Monday?
It's a Monday.
Monday? And we'll be here or at the board office?
Board office, maybe, right?
Is there any objection to moving the meeting from November 7th to November the 28th?
I believe it's Monday, November 28th.
The 7th, which we know will be way too early. So we would move it to after, Thanksgiving, which would be the 28th. Any objection to that? That's quite serious also. It'd be 5:30, wherever we're supposed to meet.
That would be like our regular meeting.
That's our regular Monday.
Yes, it would be here.
That's the only meeting we're having that month, as of right now. We're just moving the 7th to 28th, okay? And then, the 13th, everyone's on board with that. And it'll start probably at 4:30, 5 o'clock.
It's usually around 4 o'clock.
4 o'clock, 4:30, somewhere like that.
Yes.
That'll be on there. Maybe, probably at the hotel.
Yes.
Is yet to be determined.
Yet to be determined, the housing, the lodging lottery is September 21st. So we will know by the end of that week, around the 23rd, where it will be again, and all that.
And since we're all agreeing with it, there's no motion to move it.
No.
That's correct. All right, anything else? Madam Chair?
That is it, sir.
Can I say some recommendations for us?
Yes. Like, this month, the meeting minutes from August 15th, please. We have some then-and-out invoices for approval as they exceed $3,000. And then the three donations that we have received in the month of August. 7A through 7C, please.
We have a motion? We have a motion in a second? Do any discussion or comments on the treasurer's recommendation, A, B, C? None? Please call a roll.
Mrs. Wachols?
Aye.
Dr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Mr. Engel?
Aye. Mr. Mulnar? Superintendent's report.
Yeah, just a few quick items. The first one is, next Monday, on September 19th, we're having our full-scale safety drill, which there'll be no school for students, but all staff will be in attendance. And that's the drill we do every three years, where we have, we're required to have a full-scale drill. And we have such a great partnership with our local law enforcement agencies and emergency personnel. If I were to read you the list of who is coming and who is involved, I mean, there would just be 15, 20 different organizations that are coming and participating. So that will be on Monday, again, no school for students. And as always, the objective of the drill really is to practice our response to such a situation, law enforcement's response, and also all the emergency response. And I assume, like in the past, we will have... So it's an actual drill, so police cars will be coming, ambulance. We have staff members who volunteered to be injured students. They will actually be taken to local hospitals with various injuries that local hospitals will have to administer health insurance to them. It's quite, it's quite experience, but it's absolutely necessary and important, so. And with that, I want to let you know, tomorrow, I'm hoping to schedule, I have scheduled a meeting at 9 o'clock with Police Chief Kaufman and Lieutenant McCroskey. We're going to hopefully, and the principal, actually, Aaron, we're going to, my goal is to create a Comic Connect video that we can kind of discuss the drill, what's happening, so the community is aware, and we can release before Monday, just so they kind of understand what's happening from our perspective, police perspective, et cetera. So we'll be doing that tomorrow. Next, real quick?
Wait, that drill's happening at Norwood though.
Yes, it's happening at Norwood.
There are no ones happening at Norwood, not a high school, I can tell.
Yes, we rotate it every year, so we've had it at HAH Steel and Norwood. I'm sure in three years, we'll have a next one at Lee Powers. Everyone knows our theme for the year is your comment is our priority. And I've been seeing signs up in the community. Actually, I love going home every day and seeing the signs up at the police station. They have those out, if you've seen them, driven by. So, and I know that we shared that opening ceremony. I wasn't sure if board members received their own sign. So I brought them tonight, and afterward, we can pass this out. Then we got one to give those to you. Also, I wanted to create something for our businesses and the community as well, since they support us so much. And so I had Rachel come up with a few designs. And I touched base with Teresa, who can't be here tonight, but touched base with her, because she works with Main Street, to come up with something. I think you've probably seen this too, but I brought this, if you want to pass that around and take a look at it. It's just for us to share with local businesses, so everyone knows who supports us. I'm going to be taking those to Main Street in the October meeting, passing those out. And Teresa, I've also talked about walking, passing them out also, especially downtown here, to local businesses for them to show their pride, support our comments. So.
Thank you.
I also, real quick, brought the banner from the board office that I know, again, you probably have time to sign or write a message yourself from the board or our community, so I brought that with some pens. So afterward, if you want to take a moment, we'll put that on the table. We can have you kind of put your own message on what that means to you, okay? All right, so think about that throughout the meeting. If you have nothing else to think about. And the one thing I want to share with you, the board had discussed with me about having something that when a special communication comes from the board itself, that in some way, we've let the community know that a special message or an important notice or communication is coming from the board members themselves. So I had Rachel come up with a few designs here. Here's just the two I think I like the most. And the black, of course, is just transparent. This would be like a frame that we would have around Facebook, Twitter, social media, et cetera. So that way, everyone knows when a special message is coming. So these are just two drafts. I have word of occasion on the bottom with everyone's name. I know it's hard to see there, but I want you to take a look at that. Any feedback if you'd like now, or later, and talk about that. You can make some adjustments to that, if you're interested.
Yes, that's all.
That's all I have right now.
Is there any discussion on... Do you want the right desk?
Yeah.
I did, I did too. I was worried that they'd get cut off. Sometimes when you're sharing on social media, like the bottom stuff gets cut off. But I do like this.
And I had thought whether you want to put on the mic. Sometimes you put like from the desk up, not that you would say that. But you know, something like that, maybe at the top, that might say just from... So think about maybe a phrase you might add to it, if you'd like. That might be something we could do. And I'll talk. I'll talk with Rachel. On social media, those names might be a little small, so maybe we can work with moving the white out, making it bigger. I'll talk with her. You like the one on the right desk? Everyone?
I don't know.
The other chair?
How about, let's pull like a...
A green.
Yeah, I can work on, I can work on both a little bit, and then, maybe we use both. Whatever, mark it something special, maybe we use the one. Anything else?
Thank you.
Okay, who's on our floor?
Does it?
I think.
Okay. Sure?
Okay.
All right. Okay, so this starts my report. I do want to share a little bit about on the board agenda. I believe it's exhibit 11D is the memorandum of understanding between Amherst Schools and Special Olympics for our Unified Sports Program. So I want to kind of give a little bit of background, because some of you might not be as familiar with this as others. But this came about and came to our district in 2017, 2018, is actually when Mr. Wolf and I started having conversations with Special Olympics about bringing the Unified Sports Program to our high school. And it started that year just with track and field. And what it is, is it's an opportunity for students with disabilities and their typical peers to connect through athletics. And so they practice together, they compete together. There's several local districts that they do tournaments with. And it's really quite an event. So it started with just the track and field. And then evolved, eventually, we picked up basketball. The following year, we picked up basketball. So we were doing basketball and track and field. And then, last year, they picked up of all things cornhole. And so they were doing cornhole tournaments through Unified Sports, which was a sight to see. And then, this year was the first year we did, we started with football. So we actually have something throughout the entire year, an event throughout the entire year, where offseason athletes are competing with our Special Olympians. And, you know, there's some rivalries that have happened between some of the other districts and things, and so it's a lot of fun. It's a lot of fun. But this has been with our district now, we're in year five. And the next step, our next goal is then to expand it even further out of the high school and move it into the junior high. And have it there as well. So, stay tuned. And then the other thing I wanted to share with you is actually something that's happening this week. It's very, very exciting. Mr. Mulnar, myself, and our literacy coaches, Brianna Carden and Erica Kaufman, have been working together to draft our Reaching All Students Through Language and Literacy Grant. This is a grant that just came up really over the summer and opened actually on August 30th and is due on the 15th. So the turnaround time has been real quick for us to kind of work on getting this, the information and things together for this grant. But what's exciting about it is that the actual implementation of the grant, should we be lucky enough to receive it, will start in October. So we should know pretty quick here whether or not we're going to receive it. But what this, these dollars are coming out of is this is going to be a two-year project where we may be granted up to $200,000 to work on closing achievement gaps that may have come up in different subgroups due to COVID. And so it's providing training, it's providing support for teachers, it's making sure that they have the tools they need to reach every family and understanding the importance of language and literacy and how to work with their own kids. So, sending out to the universe, sending goodwill, we'll be submitting that within the next day or so. And I will keep you posted, yes.
There's only, they're only giving away 20 grants. So like, the last one, we won last year for the Child Reeds Grant. When 16 were given to the state, we got that, only 20 are given away. So, we did actually check ahead of time.
Uh huh.
Well done, because again, we know that sometimes if you win one grant, it's only a small amount, they might want to share the wealth. But we were encouraged to apply, and they said, no, that we would be considered the one we like, because we got one, we couldn't get the other. So, we're hopeful.
Yep. So send good vibes into the universe. And then, just one more plug for our September 2nd harvest distribution. If you could share this, it's been shared out on the Twitters and on Facebooks. But we have our first drive-through coming up next week. That concludes, sir.
Questions, was there?
Yes.
On the Special Olympics, is it only Amherst students competing against other teams?
For the unified?
Yeah, or is it just like anybody in the area?
Our team consists only of Amherst students. And we compete against teams, like we've competed against Sandusky, one of the high schools in Cleveland, Avon. I believe Avon Lake has been in it. So it's, every team sends a, every district sends a team to a tournament.
Just students here.
It's just our students here.
Any other questions? Was there?
If not, my report from the GMBS, I don't really have much. School is off and running very well. You know, they just started here a couple weeks ago after the fair. I've heard no issues today. I have no idea, from that perspective, so that's a good thing. If you follow them on Facebook, you see some of the things that are happening. We have the whole coming weekend coming up here real soon. So, that board meeting is not till next week, so I don't have a whole lot else to share with you today. Unless you have some questions that you'd like to find some answers for, or get answers for.
None? Okay. Item C would be board discussion, any other community reports or other comments from the board? Item B C, a thank you, Board of Education will see the thank you. Board of Education, Mike, Amy, Sarah, thank you for the wonderful gifts that you gave me at the board meeting in July. The nice video was very moving, you know, with a very memorable meeting. I appreciate you all, and wish you all the best, sincerely, Steve. So, if you want to look at that, certainly has come around, but that came. So I'll just share that with you. The other item that I know that you've gotten an email about, I think, already, is the Home Running Parade. So we just need to have a little bit of a discussion about that. And it is on the 20th...
The Friday 30th.
What did you say, it's the 30th?
The 30th.
It's the 30th? So, what is the wishes of this group?
What are the options?
So normally, the past, the campaign, the board, and superintendent, or by treasurer, would often get in a truck or two, and just ride in a truck, and I guess wait. Am I correct?
Throw candy.
Throw candy right there. So, I mean, that is the option. So, unless you wanted to walk, which I did talk to Teresa, who's here tonight, her desire was not to walk. Unless you were...
That's not...
Walk in a parade. I mean, we could look into some other possible options. Truck, maybe a car donation from some local car dealerships, maybe. Vertable, hopefully the weather's nice. We would even look into possibly having some sort of open...
Trailer hayride.
Trailer hayride kind of thing, possibly. Have some science through it, so, I mean, those are kind of the options to look for.
Should we ever pass on anything that we can't contribute?
Can we like throw out green?
Because if we have like a comment, we can... I'll just walk next to the thing and hand it to people. Because I'm not one that likes littering at a parade. I'm the kid that like walks up, and I have to piece it all up. So I would rather just like hand something to someone than chuck it at the door. I don't mind either, like whatever the group decides. I'll ride it, you guys.
What would you make your thoughts?
I don't mind walking.
Can Carrie or Dan? The other schools would be carrying?
Or whatever floats. I mean, I don't work here, float, who's going to make a float?
I'm like, just long years.
I have a trailer. I have access to a large trailer. As long as we have a vehicle to pull it with. I can probably just go with mine, but you know, if somebody like donated a vehicle, we could pull it. If you're going to walk.
If anyone wants to walk.
It's not, you're totally up to it.
You can drive, and I'll walk. So I guess, do we want a, do we want a vehicle? A trailer, or do we want to walk?
I don't think we have to, I think if we have a vehicle with a trailer, we get there, and some of us sit, and it's almost over. We all sit.
No, I think whatever they do. Yeah, if we're going to walk, we all walk, or if we're going to all ride, we all ride. I don't know, maybe we should be...
Well, then you gotta ride, because Teresa's, I should not walk.
Well, but Teresa's only one of five, so, that's why I'm saying, what do we want? Because if we're going to do the trailer, we need to make some plans for that. And typically, the art department makes us assign and does some of that stuff. So we need to be on that, so we can not, not make that decision. I don't care, one way or the other, I can walk, I can ride, whatever consensus can come to. Huh? So we're going to green hang. We could work on that. So, Michael, if you're going to let us know what we do?
Yep.
Okay, from that perspective. So do we want to throw candy, do we want to throw...
Yes.
Those make...
Don't say.
But is that like more redraw, though?
Then people will be like...
Originally.
Candy use, or a tolls, or something. I was going to say, you're not throwing those, you're handing.
We have a lot of kids in mind, and I don't know if you can hand, you're going to get...
No, not me, I want the heavy.
My help, but how's that?
It's how a parade goes.
Well, when you spread it with candy, they found.
Listen, I have two children that collect a literal ton of candy at the parade. I would not be unhappy if someone just handed them a pencil. Or they didn't get the pencil, or the candy, they can't.
Maybe just wave the...
Yeah. I just know I got dragged because I bought two 12-year-olds one year. And Mr. Engel says, I didn't buy the good stuff. So it's got to be...
It's only Mr. Engel that says that.
At least some part.
Mark, I didn't say anything about 12-year-olds.
I don't remember saying anything.
I'm sure we can sort out the...
We need to determine, we need to determine what we're going to do from that perspective. But we will need to engage the art department. Because the previous year, it was not the right size for the trailer that they're using. Okay?
Do you want to use that beer?
I think so.
I think we can use that beer as well. You know, you better realize it's massive, whatever the sheet has to be too tight. All right? That's a good question. What was the question?
Is there a theme for homecoming weekend beyond...
Beyond Amherst.
Beyond Amherst.
I'm sure the committee can answer that question for us. I haven't seen it published yet, but I was. So we could ask. Prince Man.
Lisa Volter.
So, you will take care of letting them know that you're participating?
Yes.
Okay, great. What other questions or discussions do we need to have? Updates from anybody on anything?
I have the legislative stuff. It's not fancy, but it's something. So, not too much to report right now, because they're, the House and Senate are out of session. So most of them are in their own districts, changing things like that. So I've got a lot of this information from the OSBA legal website, legislative websites. And basically, so the purpose of Ohio School Board Association, legislative platform is to state publicly OSBA's positions on more issues facing public education. And, next slide, thank you. So, the responsibilities I would have is share information from OSBA about state and federal education related legislation. I do get those emails. And now that I'm signed up, I get the other email from all the meetings and they go more into more depth with some of the bills coming out of Columbus. We're supposed to encourage our school board colleagues to contact legislators on important issues, establish and maintain relationships with our local legislators, and to join Kids Pack, OSBA's political action committee. Yes, we know.
Um, I really appreciate that Dr. Messer is making this presentation this evening. She is the legislative liaison for our House School Boards Association. I will just say that there have been a number of pieces of legislation that have come out that are slanted negatively toward the public school environment. And this is incredibly important that we all advocate for public education. So, I really appreciate that you're doing this, thank you.
And these are our legal legislators, so Senator Healy, that's his information there, and some of his bills that he's primarily sponsored on, and also Representative Miller, again, his contact, some of his bills that he's primarily sponsored on. Next, this Thursday, he's having a town hall at six o'clock at the Bethel Raye Shiftears. So, figured if I can get out of Cleveland, by then, I would still listen, listen to that. Ask questions, I'm not sure. And then, I think the last slide is just bills that we know about. As more information comes out next month, we'll have more information on different bills. But, we all know about House Bill ninety-nine, today is effective date. And one that I found interesting was House Bill one ten, which is our operating budget. So, the term "public schools" was removed from the list of entities to be able to do, conduct cheerful raffles. I was in a panic at first because I was thinking about boosters and P T A, P T O, all that stuff. But, the language in that bill allows for boosters and P T Os and like that to continue to do that. And I actually called it legal today because I went, well, I live P T O and I volunteer a lot. I'm also on the school board, so, you know, I just wanted to make sure you've been hired a couple of years. It was okay, and she said, it's fine, we're acting as a P T O person, so. Because we have some raffles and things coming up. And.
So with removal of, of the public schools in that, because public schools have never been allowed to do fundraising, is that going to try to allow them to do fundraising?
I can't imagine that it would.
I can't imagine either, but when you saw that up there, it said they removed that from that perspective, is that, is there a group that's looking to allow schools to do that? I mean, that's what I thought of immediately, the second thing, you can see it's not doing it because you've never been allowed to do that from a school board perspective.
And, some people believe that P T Os, boosters, P T As are part of the district. They are considered district support organizations, most of which have their own Bible one C three, of which district does not have a Bible one C three. We are a subdivision of the state of Ohio, so, again, thank you, Dr. Messer, for presenting about this this evening.
And we always do make sure all of our organizations are Bible one C three.
Yes.
Because they do have to file with.
Each year, yes.
Each year.
It'll be October, so next month, you'll have that.
Can I share real quick, just so the board is aware? Nathan Manning, Gail Manning, and Joe Miller, they all attend our monthly Lorraine County Superintendent meetings here at D F C. So, it does not happen around the state, but they're always in attendance. We have a direct line as far as our superintendent group, our local Chief of Service Center to them every month. And so that being a big support from them for education, especially Lorraine County Schools, is very awesome.
We know Mr. Miller has had several of our students and groups come on those in the last year for different things that he has recognized. So, I think we have a pretty good relationship with Mr. Miller. Anything else? Also? Other discussions or?
There was a bullet staff member of the month. Yeah. That was just an idea that came up, and we had that in the past. And it was a staff nominated, other staff members. But I know a couple of members have discussed possibly bringing that back and possibly maybe having administration kind of select, or as we're out about the building, seeing what's happening and maybe selecting someone or multiple staff members of the month, and maybe having some board recognition for that. Maybe we could use the new communication frame. So, you use a board, you kind of recognize them on social media, that's an idea. Possible, the thought came up was to possibly see it again. Like in the past, maybe a local business or nonprofit or somebody here might like to maybe donate, you know, some nice gift cards or things for those staff members. So that was just an idea that came up, I don't know if the board would want to talk about that from your perspective on what you might, what you want to do.
If I can piggyback for just a moment, Mr. Miller mentioned if perhaps we can get downtown businesses to sponsor the, the recognition again, so to speak. It was suggested or asked to get the board to do that. And I really don't believe that that is permissible. Our employees are compensated. And so, we don't buy gift cards and pass them out, gift cards are like cash. And since we have compensation, we all have a contract for employment, I don't believe that that would be a permissible forfeit of profit for the purpose.
Yeah, that's a question I had. So, because it wasn't like one forfeit or given to somebody, but I wasn't sure, but thank you for that.
Clarification to that.
I think the reason it went away was because people did not nominate people in the buildings. So I think that if we choose to bring this back, that it would be something that administration does as opposed to that, because it got to the point where nobody nominated anybody. And I think that that's so many times true in any employee situation, employer situation. You know, initially it goes off grade, and then after three or four months, or it's the same for three or four people, they keep getting nominated. So I think that if we want to do that, it's fine, but I think that it should come from the administration. That way, everybody in the system is eligible for that from that perspective. So, what's your thoughts?
I've always heard recognizing people, giving them shout-outs, um, I love that. And I think if it's administration or whoever decides, and you could do it like one person per building, a month.
That's right.
And most like, yeah, every building, like.
Steve, Steve speak.
Go ahead.
Well, Steve used to nominate, he'll make a comment. Do you think those nominees or people would attend if we do this every month?
You mean like attend, would we?
Well, isn't that the intent here to?
I mean, that was, that was a thought.
Could do a kind of conversation.
There are new kind of conversations with them possibly. As far as attending board, I probably would get input from A T A, teacher association, because, yeah. See what they have their thoughts on.
I don't know, I think it's a great idea as far as recognition, I just, I guess I understood it to be the bringing them here. And I, I just, I don't know if they attend.
I think if you're giving someone a recommendation, you also don't want to give them a certificate. So, to say, hey, this is a great thing, but you took on to my meeting. Like, we could just do the conversation or on social media or whatever.
And we can have, we can give them a certificate, whether they come, if they choose to come, they come. If they don't come, it's not.
And they can still be mentioned at the meeting.
Right, it could be mentioned immediately.
Yeah, for not being penalized.
And it can be upon conversation, it can be a release from the board. However, we wish to do that. I mean, if they come, they come, if they don't come, they don't.
And is there?
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, so if we can't do gift cards or anything, we can do a certificate set, is there like?
Are they allowed to do it? Do we have these conversations about certificates or?
We can do certificates, with no problem, but giving them an actual gift, we can't do. Okay? And I don't know that we want, I mean, we just can't do that. The certificate is what we could do, and then the recognition is that we're getting publicized as a bad employee of the month. Or staff member of the month, or whatever, of course.
I think we should do something. I think it's fine. Invite them, if they throw up, right?
And then, you can do a positive conversation, maybe reduce the conversation at the board meeting. So we show it at the, here, and then it goes public. So it's not released prior to the board meeting. That would be my policy. And so this is going to start in October?
October, remember?
On the same, we're, you know, it's.
Yeah, yeah, so we could do it, we need to get it started. Absolutely, we'll come up with something.
Okay.
They're hard on me. Show the rights to them. Yes.
And the criteria, you two can come up with along with Amy, because basically here are people. It's coming from you. We see something or know someone, we've heard something great about, we'll let you know. Okay?
Perfect.
Okay? But let's try to have ready for October. Speaking of that, what am I gonna ask you about, Sarah?
I just wrote down two words.
And what word, that's two words?
Um, crystal apple.
And I didn't even bring it up at the gender review meeting, I just thought I could keep it because I didn't know who passed it on to who. Boom. So, I think, you know, now would be a good time to get those nominations out there. So, we could possibly do that as well. October or November, probably November, because that would be less months to get that. So, that, that announcement actually could be your first thing you announce on that new board.
Yeah.
Yes. You know, we want to nominate them all. Okay? Other things, maybe come before us this evening, in the special portion. All right? Nothing good? All right. With that, if we want item ten, which would be the personnel recommendations, Mr. Miller?
Yes, we have some personnel recommendations, many of them, of course, at the beginning of school year involved hiring some staff members or changing some contracts. And so we have personnel items A through P, which I think you've all been able to review. Just wanted to highlight one in particular, that letter J. Our teachers here at preschool, Chad Franco and Anthony Trunzo, they are, they're, I think, choosing to give up their planning time to have additional class, which we've done in the past sometimes. So that's just, you know, when we have a certain number of students, and when all the art classes, not enough room, they sometimes do that. So this year, they are, they're giving up their planning time for one of their planning periods so they can have an additional art class for all their students. So I just wanted to recognize them for doing that. That's a great thing. So with that, I'd like to recommend personnel items A through P.
Ten A through ten P.
Yes, ten A through ten.
Motion please? In a second?
Second.
Comments or discussion on any of those items? A through P. Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Zepha?
Aye.
Dr. Messer, um, Mrs. Wackel?
Hi.
Mr. Engel?
Item eleven on the agenda is educational recommendations.
Yeah, we have five items that are educational recommendations. I just want to highlight letter C, or item C. That agreement in the Board of Education College is for the Teacher Education Candidate Program, or the T E C program, where we work with them, and they send us possible teaching candidates who are able to field experience with us and other experiences in our classrooms. So that's a great opportunity for students who are interested in education to come here to a great district. And then also, item E, which is Lakala, which we've worked with in the past. I think we have not worked with them the past couple of years or so, but they're coming back this year, and that, that kind of contract is for five and a half college per week, where they set a staff member on site to work with our students directly. Private conversations, right, Sarah?
Private conversations, class lessons, drug and alcohol screenings, there's a, there's a list. Yeah.
So it's great to have them come back this year for our students and support. So with that, I'd like to recommend items eleven A through eleven E.
Do you hear a motion? In a second? Motion in a second is a discussion of items A through the items E.
Yes.
From E.
I have comments on A, about the board policies. So, the language in there has, you know, the suspensions, the appeal process can be in front of board for the designee. And in my talking with Mr. Miller, she was writing, she was following, but he would rather that process goes ahead so that we're not necessarily making a situation. So I wanted to discuss that, if we are good with that, then I think the language needs to be changed so that reflects that who's designated. I have no problem with that, but it needs to be changed, and that's what we're gonna do. So, if we can discuss that here, the policy committee talks about it, they need again.
So, so what we changed in the policy, so the reason we changed the policy, and we only changed the minor bit, Sarah, for that little bit, but basically, expulsion hearings up to this point have been done with superintendent. If a parent were to make an appeal, usually that was also done with superintendent. I'm not aware, and I have asked the board, has anyone who's been here, if you've ever been to expulsion hearing come to you as the?
Yeah, we have. I like you wronged. We have, we have had come to us after they had exhausted all means for the superintendent. I've only had one, but we did have one come to us, okay, from that perspective. So, I assumed that the process was still the same, that it went through you, and then if it needed to come to us, it would come to us, because when it gets to us, legal is involved. In that perspective, because that idea had to be attorneys representing different things in regards to that. So, if we need to do that, then we should pull item A off of the agenda and have the policy rewritten, and then put it back on.
So just to clarify, so, in the expulsion part of the policy, it only talked about the superintendent and not a superintendent's designee. So I, so if I wanted to, for example, Sarah's assistant to take care of the expulsion hearing, she could take care of that. One of the, one of the reasons for that would also be that if there was an appeal or wanted to have a view by me, it'd be someone else to go to after Sarah. Which, but it could still go for the board because it's part of the policy as well. So we just added that option, just like in suspensions where there could be the principal, what the principal's designated, we just added just designated for the expulsion piece too. So it could be me, or it could be someone else like Sarah. So that was the only change of policy.
I'm confused. Your thoughts?
Well, I, so if the board is not going to be a part of the appeal process, then we should change that language. Because right now, it's.
But we are a part of the appeal process if it gets to us. We're not part of the initial, initial.
Oh, right, not the year.
Yeah, so we are part of that. So we, there are some things that would possibly have to come to us, once we get to that. And heaven forbid, let's hope that doesn't happen. But I, like I said, I have stepped through one of them, and it's not fun from that perspective. So I think that we do want to be part of that, because if for some reason it would be against him, okay, or his designee, who's gonna do that? You know, if, 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 if someone would do something to him or her. You know, if, 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 if someone would do something to him or her, the superintendent or the assistant superintendent, we would be the ones that have to hear that. There's nobody else to hear that, from that perspective. So I think that we have to stay out of there from that perspective. But student-related issues that involve staff, or all of him, if he, if he designates her. We've never had a designate before, it was always a superintendent. So I think the biggest change is exactly what you said, he has the right, but the only person I would say that he has the right to designate them to would be the assistant superintendent. And in some cases, the assistant superintendent might know more about the situation, especially this assistant superintendent, because of who she deals with.
So really, to put it in plain language, I think what we added was, if, if a parent was unhappy with the decision by, let's say, Sarah, then they would have a second person, a different person, a different ear to go to, which would be me. And then they requested then to go to the board, they could do that as well. So it'll almost be like.
An additional layer.
It's additional layer, but also it's, it's for, it's actually for parents, right? So they have initial person to go to before they get, so that's it. It's essentially what we did, for just expulsions only, because it's, it's already there for suspension. Does that help?
The only change.
Now, I mean, if you want, if you want us to be reviewed more, then we can do that. That's entirely up to us to decide. Do you want to just take that off or table that item?
Yeah.
Another option could be, we, we approve it so that Sarah's in the process, and then we just go back and revisit it with the policy committee. We'd almost bring it back.
What's your concerns?
Um, just the, just the appeal process, so in the expulsion, for appeals, it says board.
So you don't.
It doesn't say, that language was not changed from the original policy that we had in place. The only things that were changed were wherever it said superintendent under the expulsion hearing, we added the phrase, or superintendent's designate. And so anywhere you see or superintendent's designate, that's the only change that we had proposed in, in order to give that extra layer for the expulsion. Like, we didn't touch anything with the appeals or, or that.
So your wish is just to table that item, or what would you like to do?
Um, I'm fine with voting on it now as they explained it.
Okay, all right, I'm, I want you to be comfortable. Yeah, we can always take it back to the policy committee. You're comfortable? You're good?
Yeah, how they explained it now, yes, because when I was reading it, it was just, I didn't see superintendent designate, so I don't know if that's.
Make sure we add this back to the follow-up date.
Yeah, we can, we can, yes, we can. And, and did we, what we, so my question, Sarah? When we added to the agenda, did, did we have like either strike through language or additional language or colors, something? We could see what change was.
I don't believe so.
It wasn't changed.
So that's okay.
Then that's, that's where they.
So for the future, we'll definitely do that, so you can see the exact change of where strikeouts are and additions are. And I, so we apologize for that.
Usually it's.
Yeah.
Okay? Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Or these recommendations? All right. Anything else? No? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Wackel, Mr. Zappa, or Dr. Messer? Mr. Engel?
Aye. Item twelve, business recommendations, smaller?
Yes, we have four items that recommending, uh, first one, A, is for participation that we have with Board Mark to provide onsite blue shots for our employees. B is, is, is a resolution to approve us the option of using the House Schools Council proper purchasing, plus purchasing program. Basically, it's allowing them to, on our behalf and all the consortium, all the district involved, for them to gather bids for us and to get the best price for us, which they often do. That does not mean we're actually going to purchase buses, but we have to have this resolution done before the twenty-third, so that if we decide to between, I think it's like November and April, we can with them. So that's what that is for, just to clarify what that means as well. And then there's an agreement for, um, homecoming dance, I think at the kitchen, and then, uh, OSHA site agreements. And so those are the four I recommend the board, items twelve A through twelve D.
Do you get a motion? In a second?
Second.
Discussion or comments? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mrs. Wackel, Dr. Messer, and Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Mr. Engel?
Aye.
Hearing no other business, we, we come before the board this evening, I'd ask for a motion for adjournment. Motion in a second, is there comments or discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Dr. Messer?
Aye.
Mrs. Wackel? Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Mr. Engel?
Aye.